Because we're having some technical issues.
Is this the final planning commission?
Pardon? Final meeting agenda.
Is the final for you, Tom?
Yes.
I can go back to dancing, oh my god, Dancing with the Stars is on tonight.
Really?
Trying to think of every excuse.
Yeah.
Take the lead.
Okay, I think we're. Chair Kidwell, we are rolling, so whenever you're ready.
We're rolling.
Getting the lead out here.
Okay. The planning commission meeting for September twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen is called to order. Do we have any public comments for anything that is not on the agenda for the evening? Seeing none, we'll move forward to the first item on the planning commission agenda, which is CU dash sixteen dash zero 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 one, SP sixteen dash zero 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 eight, and VR dash sixteen zero 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 two, addition of two wooden utility poles to the PGE Kanema substation located at one five two South McLaughlin Boulevard.
Mr. Chair, you might tell the audience what the CU, the SP, and the VR stand for.
See, conditional use is CU. I don't remember.
Site plan.
Site plan. I thought that was special pole.
That is.
Pete, do you have a report for us?
Yes, thank you, and good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. So, tonight's application is from PGE. The address of the property is one five two South McLaughlin Boulevard. There's another tax lot involved without a site as address. Clackamas County map numbers for both tax lots are shown up here on the slide. This is a vicinity map. Aerial photo of the site showing the location between South High Street and McLaughlin Boulevard. In my slides, I refer to South High Street as South End Road, too, because it makes a transition there. This is the site plan, which is in the application, and also in my staff report, showing the proposal for the locations. And I'll describe what is being proposed here in a little bit. This is the current street view from ninety-nine E. You can see that the site is established already with a substation for PGE. It's been that way for some time, fifty years, we believe. There's a lot of structures on there associated with that substation, including the large, several large lattice structures that are quite tall in order to get the power lines up and to where they need to be. This is another view from the south on ninety-nine E. This is Google's street view, gotta give them credit. And this is a view of the site from South End Road, because it actually abuts South End Road here. But on this side of the property, there's a hillside with vegetation where the power lines come over, but there's no actual structures other than power poles in this location. And here's an oblique aerial photograph from Bing Maps of the site showing the location and what's out there. You can see in this slide the lattice structure that is the closest to ninety-nine E. So, the proposal is for PGE to add two wooden utility poles, one sixty-foot tall and one eighty-foot tall, to the existing substation with new transmissions lines to connect to the existing Kanema Sullivan Fifty-Seven Kilovolt River Crossing Tower, which is the large lattice structure. And that's another view that was in the application, the current street view of the entrance to the site. And this is a photo rendering of what the site would look like with these two wooden structures attached, or constructed. We can go back and reference these slides. So, this application actually required a conditional use permit, a variance, and a site plan application. The reason that the conditional use permit is required is because there was no prior conditional use on file for the site. The site's zoned R six, single-family residential. And when you read the zoning code, a public utility is a conditional use within that residential zone. And the code states that, in the case of a use existing prior to the effective date of this ordinance, and codified in this title, and classified in this title as a conditional use, any change of use, expansion of lot area, or expansion of structure shall conform with the requirements for a conditional use. So, that's what's triggering a conditional use permit. The conditional use code also requires that a public utility have a setback equal to the height of the structure. So, we know that several of the structures on the site already don't comply with this current code requirement, but this new, these two new poles are required to conform to this or apply for a variance. So, this is the conditional use code criteria, which we've provided findings for in our staff report. Sorry for the small writing, but they, I'll go through these briefly. The use has to be listed as a conditional use in the underlying district. The characteristics of the site must be suitable for the proposed use. The development must comply with our street code. The proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area in a manner which substantially limits, impairs, or precludes the use of surrounding properties for the primary use listed in the underlying zone district. And as I mentioned, this is zoned R six, single-family residential. The proposal must also satisfy the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan that apply to the proposed use. And so, we've made findings for compliance with our conditional use code in the staff report, and the application complies with those. The variance situation, the variance is required to allow the eighty-foot utility pole to be placed parallel to the lattice tower. And what that means is it has to be fairly close to the property line in order to line up with that tower. And that tower already is about ten feet off the property line. So, if this was a brand-new site, and there was a brand-new substation going in, there would be a seventy-five-foot, a hundred-foot, possibly bigger setback based on the tallest structure that would be proposed in that new site. But in this situation, there's no way they can meet that. So, the other variance that's requested is to exceed the height requirement in the R six zone, which is thirty-five feet for a building. So, we've always said that a building equals a structure. And if you're a power pole, or transmission pole, or a communication pole, you've still gotta comply with the underlying zone district dimensional standards unless you have a variance. So, that's why we're applying the variance criteria. And so, there's two variances, and we've provided findings for both of those variances. Variance criteria is spelled out here. The first criterion is that you are not to cause substantial damage to adjacent properties by reducing light, air, safe access, or other desirable or necessary qualities protected by the title. That the request is the minimum variance that would alleviate the hardship. Granting the variance will equal or exceed the purpose of the regulation to be modified, and that any impacts resulting from the adjustment are mitigated. And you have to show that there's no practical alternative which would accomplish the same purpose of the variance and not require one. And finally, that your variance conforms to the comprehensive plan. So, the application has complied with all the variance criteria. And finally, the site plan and design review. A site plan and design review application is a part of any variance or conditional use permit. This one is for a minor site plan, because it's less than a thousand square feet of structure that's being proposed. When we went through the application and the applicant's responses, it's clear that the proposal doesn't affect any existing landscaping, vehicle, and pedestrian circulation, access, off-street parking, street improvements, screening, fencing, or other site plan and design review criteria. And many of those criteria are found not to be applicable in this case. But the ones that are applicable are met by the application. So, our conclusion and recommendation is outlined here. We want to point out that the application is submitted only for the addition of the two poles to the existing established site. The applicant does not plan to do any additional phasing or vest any future expansion of the site with this application. Any future expansions on the site would have to go through the same process these two poles are going through. And as far as we can ascertain, there's very few, if any, land use impacts associated with these improvements. So, we're recommending approval of these applications without conditions. And we'd be happy to answer any conditional use or variance or site plan questions you have.
Questions from, for staff? Okay, before we proceed, I was reminded that I need to ask the commissioners if they've visited the site or have any ex parte contacts regarding this matter?
No.
I did visit the site. I presume we also have to ask if there's anybody who objects to the fact that we did not read the hearing script, since this is a public hearing.
It hasn't been open to the public yet, so we can do that still.
So, is that something I need to do, then?
When we're done with the conflict interest.
Okay, I will read that momentarily.
Damon, you're next.
Any other?
I'm a PGE customer, and I'm familiar with the site, but I don't think you can avoid being a PGE customer.
Aren't we all?
Well, you could have solar, and you could actually be selling a PGE if you do it right.
Well, I guess we're all PGE customers.
Pete?
Paul.
Paul. I'm looking at him and calling.
I haven't visited the site in response to the application, but I've been down on that site several times.
Tom? Tom's tired. Bob, I'm a little confused tonight. Bob?
No, I'm familiar with the site, but I do not find this a polarizing subject.
The question is, you're familiar with it, but did you visit it? And do you have any ex parte contacts, being a PGE customer?
Since it's a special pole ordinance, yes, I know. And I'm familiar with the location of the site, but I did not specifically visit the site for this hearing. So, I will proceed with reading the quasi-judicial hearing script and procedures. Tonight, we have a hearing on a land use application. The staff has prepared a report for this application and made it available to the public seven days before the public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to this applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart on the wall. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. You should fill out your address on the card, so the city will notify you of its final decision. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name. And testimony and evidence will be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe any other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person may submit any written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the consideration of the city commission, or Luba, or both. Without raising the issue on the record with a sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issues precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Any other questions or comments for staff?
I was just trying to find on your staff report, of course, I'm flipping through it here, where the variance criteria is addressed. I did read it. I just wanted to ask a question about it, but I'm trying to find it.
There?
Yep, I know. I remember. I remember seeing it. I'm going backwards, so I'm on page eighteen, so maybe it's after eighteen. Or maybe it's before eighteen. Willamette River Greenway, no, I don't want that.
It's pages thirty, actually, twenty-nine through thirty-one.
Oh, way down at the end.
Right at the end.
Laura, can I see for a minute on the screen?
Twenty.
So, yeah. Starting on page twenty-nine, chapter seventeen, sixty variances.
I'm almost there. I'm almost there. Sorry. Okay.
And then the grounds are addressed on, starting on the middle of page thirty.
And I should mention that the applicant is here tonight. Right, as soon as we're done grilling you, we'll talk to the applicant.
This is an SP, as you stated here.
Special pole.
All right. That's what I was missing. I've forgotten that you had addressed the, how the variance complies with the comprehensive plan. You said you addressed it under the conditional use permit section, but how does that relate to the variance criteria?
So, the variance criteria.
It says under seventeen sixty thirty, "The variance conforms to the comprehensive plan and the intent of the ordinance being varied."
Okay.
So, that is, the ordinance that's being varied is the R six, single-family residential zone.
The height limit.
Height limit, right.
Right.
Got that. And then the comprehensive plan criteria. I'm going back to conditional use permits. I'm not disagreeing. I'm just asking for a little further clarification.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think the, they're very similar. In the conditional use criteria, we go through and look at quite a few additional grounds. Primarily, the goals that have to do with scenic views and scenic sights, the provision of public facilities, the protection of the Willamette River Greenway in particular, and in particular, that the proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area in a manner which substantially limits its use. So, with respect to it, applying to the residential zone, and the proposed height limit is very much in keeping with what's out there already. We did not feel that there was a significant impact on that. The other aspect of the report that deals with adjacent uses is that, even though that site and some of the adjacent sites are, allow residential use, with the exception of what's above South End Road, there is very little residential development nearby. In fact, none, until you get into the Kanema district proper, where the residential use is. So, at least in terms of existing land uses out there, it's largely commercial or vacant, low-density type uses.
Well, my only suggestion is that, rather than just refer to another section which deals with a different code, maybe what you, what I would recommend is that in that section that you amend it to say what you just said.
Okay.
So that it's very clear that you're applying the comprehensive plan policies to the variance as opposed to referring back to criteria that applies to the conditional use permit. That would just make, in my opinion, would make it just cleaner.
Yeah, yeah. Good suggestion.
And along those lines, I'm looking at seventeen fifty-six forty.
B or C?
C.
What page are you on?
Oh, I don't know. It never tells me what page.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five of the actual document. Where you have a nice, bold finding, "Variants required. Please refer to the findings in section seventeen sixty-eight." Where's section seventeen sixty-eight in this document? Because it goes right down to thirteen, and then it just, it never gets. Twelve, fifteen, seventeen forty-seven, forty-one, fifty.
That's a typo. I meant to say seventeen sixty. You got me.
Okay, well, that's.
We're just letting you know we actually read this stuff.
Yeah. Thank you.
It goes to sixty, but then the document ends. So, it's like, it isn't.
Good catch. Thank you.
Any other?
And seventeen sixty refers back to?
Variances.
At seventeen fifty-six forty.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
See this for the reason, and then see this for the reason.
I will just say, just, that is one of the things that I find not so helpful when applicants do it. They say, "Oh, refer to this other thing." No, tell me what it is right there, because I don't want to be flipping back and forth and trying to figure out how that applies to that. So, I would just make a suggestion, don't do that.
Okay.
Maybe we could save that for a separate work session.
Yes, but it applies to this. It's not a big deal. Just applies to this. It's not clear what that is supposed to be.
Okay, are we ready to hear from the applicant?
You got any slips?
No, just the applicant.
He has no slips?
No.
They can give us a slip afterwards, anyway, the applicant, if you're willing to talk.
They're at the back of the room.
Does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
You don't have to.
You don't have to. You're satisfied with the staff's presentation?
Oh, you have to come up, excuse me, you have to come up if you're talking.
Yeah.
Come on up.
Just say it in the microphone. That's all you have to do.
Thank you, Pete, for being so thorough.
Please say your name and city.
Jason Chu. With PG.
But you go by Mike.
Jennifer Sant House with PG. And we just wanted to thank the commission for taking time to read through our application. And also wanted to thank Laura's Herway for her help at the very beginning, answering our questions, and Pete's assistance through the whole process. It's been quite lovely.
Okay, very good. And if you had any doubt that we read these things, that was a demonstration.
It's what we live for.
No doubt.
Okay. I do not have any cards for people wishing to testify. Is there anyone who would like to testify either for or against this issue? Seeing none?
Do we have any rebuttal from the applicant on the testimony?
The non-testimony, yes.
Maybe Mike has something to say about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And those slips are at the back of the room in a little thingy or somewhere.
Somewhere.
Oh, there are. You put them on. Oh, you're so efficient. Thank you.
Okay, well, if there, if there is no testimony, I would propose to close the public hearing portion of this.
Can we entertain a motion?
Oh, you don't want any discussion?
Do we need any?
No, I'm just saying.
He's closing the public hearing.
I'm gonna close the public hearing. Okay, so, I'm open to discussion? Any discussion?
Yeah, I, well, I think the request is reasonable. I think that in light of the applicant's submittal, that there is a need for additional special poles here at this location to accommodate and increase the service in the area. I think it's entirely reasonable that we recommend, that we vote to approve this and the accompanying, the conditional use permit, the site plan and design review, and the variance. Although, I will say that because there's no sidewalks in the area, the Kanemas, the frontage on ninety-nine gets a little raggedy sometimes, you know. When I pulled off and went over there, I said, "Well, that's really outside their property line. That's ODOT's problem."
Take it to the state.
Yes.
Any other discussion, comments?
Denise pretty much summed it all up. Other comments?
Okay, so, at this point, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve CU sixteen zero 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 one, SP sixteen zero 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 eight, and VR sixteen zero 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 two.
Call for the question.
Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner SP?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Or Pete, as he's doing.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll be, yes, anyway, give.
Approved.
The fact that we were locked out just got my break.
I know. It completely flummoxed us. We got off our game. So, please give Mike Livingston my regards. I almost called him, but I said, "Oh, my god, ex parte." No, can't.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the next item on our agenda is concept, plan, review, Park Place, Beaver Creek, and South End. So, this is an overview.
I think this was a world record on a public hearing.
That is correct. So, Laura Turway, Community Development Director. It's been a while since we've adopted most of our concept plans. And because we see new residents moving in, there had been a lot of questions about sort of where we are on these processes as far as adoptions. And we're starting to see some annexation applications. And in light of that, and with a request from some citizens, we decided that we would bring back just a brief overview of all of the concept plans. Our intent is to have a very high-level discussion about each of these. We're not going to go into any details. We can go into details with each of the neighborhood associations or more individual, but I wanted to respect your time and all of the process that's happened so far, and just provide a brief overview and links to the documents, people, faces to the documents, so you know where to go to ask more questions. So, peeking through the slide.
Well, he's doing that. I just want to say, that's a wonderful picture.
Isn't it great?
It looks like a painting. It doesn't look like a picture.
It does.
It's a great little panorama. I mean, that's.
It is. It is a painting, isn't it? Or like a digital? Or is that an actual picture?
It's an actual picture. There's some credits that are quite small that we found online. Yes. So, working on some technicalities, but.
That's okay. We're fine.
Before we talk about the concept plan, we wanted to get into some detail, or some just high-level discussion about what concept plans are and where they come from. So, they all start with the urban growth boundary. We know that the urban growth boundary is good in Oregon, because it helps protect farm and forest land. We have some urban growth boundary locations around the city, and that means that that's the. We have some urban growth boundary locations around the city and that means that that's the the maximum extent that the city could possibly annex or grow to as it stands today. It's this organic boundary and it changes over time. And it's set by Metro, our regional government. On the map, you can see where we have gaps between our current city limits and our urban growth boundaries. And, um, can you, let's see. There we go. I got it. So how does Metro know when and where to expand their urban growth boundary? They came up with a item called urban and rural reserves. So what they wanted to do was look ahead fifty years. And in fifty years, are there places which we should look for urban growth boundary expansions or places which we should not look? So is the, is the farmland so great that we should look in other places where maybe it's less desirable for farm and forest land? And we created a map of urban and rural reserves, and this is our map for Oregon City as it stands today. Again, this is a fifty-year map, so it's just saying prioritizing places that we should look for expansions in the future. It's not guaranteeing any expansions, but it's just sort of those reserve locations right now. There is not all lands that's marked for either rural or urban. There are some that are neither rural or urban. So ideally, you would start with urban land that is designated for urban expansion and then you would move to the undesignedated before you would get to the rural reserves in the fifty-year timeframe. So we have three concept plans. Concept plans are good because they let us have some organizational method to development. We know that if the city limit may expand in an area, that area is likely going to develop at some point. And it is better to have a plan than no plan. And in this plan, it's good to identify ahead of time what the zoning will be, what the uses will be, what the open spaces will be like, how it will be served with transportation or utilities or police or schools. So what we're trying to do is coordinate at a really high level. We don't have all of the exact details at this moment. Again, it's just a really high level of how areas will come together. And it's important because we want to make these decisions as a community. We want to make sure that they comply with our comprehensive plan for the city and that they comply with Metro's urban growth management functional plan as well. So the idea is that we come together and we come to some consensus as a community to decide how we want to grow. And so you see that we have three concept plan areas in, on the map, Park Place, Beaver Creek, and South End. They were all created in different timelines. We're going to go through each of one of them, one by one. We're going to start with the Park Place concept plan, which is, you can see on the map, it's south of Holcomb Boulevard. And Pete was the planner that worked on that with our other planner Christina Robertson Gardner. And he can sort of walk through a bit more of these details, but it's a rather large acreage. It's four hundred and eighty acres and you could see identified on the screen, it was brought into the urban growth boundary through a series of expansions. You'll notice that a lot of these urban growth boundary concept plan areas are like that. It wasn't just brought in all in one swoop, it was sort of crept over time and we didn't have a plan until just now when we created these plans. Most is, so about a hundred and eighty acres was brought into the urban growth boundary in nineteen eighties and in two thousand and two, we had three hundred acres. So a lot of acreage in two thousand and two that was brought in. The concept plan has requirements, such as how many dwelling units that it ought to contain. And we worked again through that community process to see where we fall on that spectrum to gain compliance with our comprehensive plan and our metro requirements as well. In this particular case, we came up with a dwelling unit count of just shy of fifteen hundred dwelling units. And you can see the mix of acreage on the screen. There's also a component of a variety of dwelling units, so different sizes, which could mean different prices. There's commercial and retail space. There's a couple of commercial nodes. There's a school that's shown on the screen in blue. And there's also a lot of constrained land. So these acreage numbers are really big, right? They're pretty high. But we know that development can't occur on places like steep slopes or in the middle of a stream because it also has to comply with our overlay districts. There are more rules and regulations that apply when development occurs. So we're sort of taking a guess of how this will work in a general, high-level framework. So you can see on the map, there's a lot of green and the green of those constrained lands. That's just something to keep in mind through all these concept plan areas. It's not perfectly flat and there are many environmental factors that we want to protect and be cognizant of when we go through the development process. This concept plan was initiated in two thousand and six. It was completed and adopted a couple of years later in two thousand and eight. And Pete's going to tell you a little bit more about those key elements of the plan.
You said two thousand and eight, when in two thousand and eight?
March, I believe.
I mean, I'm sure it's impressed on your brain, but-
Yeah, it's been a while.
The document itself was completed in March. I don't know the date of it.
The adoption date? Yeah, I don't have the acknowledgement by DLCD, but this is one of-
Just when we adopted, I guess, is what I was, I'd like, I know about South End and I know-
Right.
But just was curious.
Shortly, shortly thereafter, I believe. Because the last version of the plan was March twelfth, two thousand and eight, which is the final adopted version, so. In the Park Place area, so what you're seeing here is a concept of the full build-out and there's no estimate on timeline for this build-out, but the idea is that when the concept plan is ultimately developed, it is a complete community. In this case, consisting of two complete communities north and south of Redland Road. The north village area would develop in a hub concept around Livsey Road, or Livsey Road. And the south village concept would develop in a hub area around Donovan Road near Ogden Middle School. As Laura mentioned, there's a lot of land in the Park Place area that is off-limits to develop, to development. And a big portion of the concepts driving this, this plan was green buildings, green onsite stormwater treatment, and ways to protect the streams and habitat in the Park Place area. And as you can see, there's a significant amount of the area zone, not zone, but designated for residential use that is light yellow. And I'll show you shortly what the land use plan implementation looks like. So a lot of the elements in this plan were driven by the core values in the planning process, which came out of the citizen involvement process. And there are many. I'm not going to list or read all of these, but when you go into the plan and look through, there's about five pages devoted to the public involvement process, which where people really concentrated on what they wanted to see out here over the long term. North Village, as we mentioned, focusing in a little more. You have the upper Livsey Main Street concept with a village green at the end, a park of about eight to ten acres. Extension of Holly Lane between Redland Road and Holcomb Boulevard, so that is a collector-level type road that would serve this area. And the other major collector that's envisioned in the plan is the Swan Avenue Collector. The area on either side of Livsey Street is, Livsey Main Street would be mixed use. And adjacent to that, you have, and so that area would be zoned neighborhood commercial if it was brought in and zoned today. And then you have medium-density residential and low-density residential feathering out to the edges of the plan. You'll notice that because of the nature of the urban growth boundary, there is a pinch point, which has been very difficult to plan, a transportation corridor. And you can see here, thanks, that's you doing that, which is only about, Tom knows, eighty to ninety feet wide, right?
I think it's less than that.
Yeah, so taking a collective level road through there has some impacts to adjacent and existing residential neighborhoods and we need to be sensitive to that. But we can only plan for urban infrastructure within our planning area, within our urban growth boundary. So this is where the road went in the concept plan. The south village, Holly Lane would be the main road in and out for the foreseeable future, but the idea is that eventually at build-out, Swan Avenue would be extended to, through this area to help serve as another collector or at least local road connection here. And that could terminate either by teeing into Holly Lane or somewhere else. So these are not engineered alignments by any stretch. They're subject to change, they're conceptual and that sort of thing, but the, you see Ogden Middle School is designated in blue there. You have an area designated as a park east of there, a neighborhood commercial node, and then you have higher density and mixed, and mixed use adjacent to that. And then again, medium-density residential and low-density residential feathering out towards the edge of the south village.
This might be a terrible question to ask at this point, but are the schools, to what level are the, have the school district been involved with?
They are involved in the technical advisory committees and throughout the process.
But those people are no longer around.
Right.
So-
But during the, at least this one, Roger Rada, the school superintendent, was heavily involved in a lot of the meetings because a lot of concerns about enrollment and projections and school capacity were discussed back then.
Well, I think, yeah, because I think this should go hand-in-hand with, not only, I mean, we're fanning out into the, these areas in the UGB or urban services boundary, but we should also be looking at, you know, the existing facilities that are currently being unused. So that, yeah, okay, I mean, that the need for additional school property out in these areas should be tempered with the availability of the existing facilities that the school district has presently. I'm not sure whether or not we had that conversation in light of these plans, but, but maybe there's a way we can do it on an ad hoc basis, I don't know. But it'd be great if we could.
Paul, I have been asking for a meeting with the school-
That's exactly where I've gotten it from.
People.
I credit you for that.
There's definitely a tension there between the Title XI requirement to only do a land use plan and then you have the school district whose responsibility is much more focused on capacity and enrollment and staffing and what actually serves the community from an educational standpoint. And Title XI really doesn't get into that. It gets into use, land use planning.
But the state agency coordination and special district coordination does.
Right, certainly, yeah.
And I would say regarding the school district as well, so sort of jumping ahead. We do have a lot of coordination between agencies, including the school district. So every time we notice applications, they actually comment on them, believe it or not. So we'll talk about the process when, how these plans get realized, but at the annexation, at the zone change, at the site plan design review or subdivision level, they comment on every application and they get sent every application, so they're, we're keeping that communication open, so we're sort of following along.
And I really appreciate the fact that they're doing that, but I would have to say that their, their comments are rather tepid. That's just my own opinion. And what I'm concerned about is that I'm not, I think it's great that they're commenting on applications. We're, what we're talking about is way before an application comes. Looking at what their long-range plans are, because, I mean, frankly, I think I've said this on the record before, when I moved here, I thought Ogden Middle School was in the city limits and that is the dumbest place to put a school that I have ever seen. It's just, it makes, it makes no sense that it's there. Outside the city limits, outs, you know, was outside the UGB at one time and I just, when I went there, I just thought, why is this even here? There was no planning, no forethought about, does this make real sense?
Don't hold back, just say what you mean.
Thank you, yeah. But anyway, it's just, it's, like I said, it's great that they comment on applications, but that's not really the crux of what these concept plans and our comprehensive plan, it's way, way earlier than that. You know, when they started talking about moving the high school, there should have been, you know, pause, let's talk about what that will do transportation-wise. What does that do with regard to the city and the fact that we have now no schools within the core of Oregon City, which seems completely odd to me. And all the schools are out on the fringe, which is, you know, looking at principles of planning, that is not where those schools should be.
With transportation costs and everything else, yeah.
I'll reach out to them and see if they would like to do a work session to talk about it, and then we can also talk about as a city where we fall in that conversation and decision-making process.
You know, and I guess the other big element in the room is this, is the availability of sewage treatment and the Tri-Cities question that is before us as well. And I think that that probably should be brought up and these master plans, presence of these master plans, master planning process should, you know, emphasize the need for Oregon City's stake in their part of the Tri-Cities pie.
I guess part of it, you know, and I, I apologize ahead of time, I, you know, I was not involved in nor was paying attention to the concept plan and I apologize to all my friends that live in Park Place, but I had bigger fish to fry at the time. But I am, I am somewhat familiar with this area and what alarms me as much about this map, and again, it's adopted, but is the amount of green area and the amount of environmental issues. And I guess part of what my concern is, is we've talked about, is that both the city and the county transportation systems plans have no funds whatsoever to allocate it for any of these roads and to connect up Holly Lane and Swan Avenue. It just, in my mind, it does not make a whole lot of sense. And the environmental issues are great here. I can remember back several people in that area coming in and asking for applications and we were kind of going, what? No, this is, you've got, you've got major environmental problems with steep slopes, geotech issues and, you know, you can't engineer everything. And so when I found out that this was going to be brought into the urban growth boundary, I just said, this, this makes, this does not make environmental sense to me at all. And I know that, you know, we can build bridges and all that, but looking at all where, where the general alignment of these roads are, I don't know, I'm just, I'm thinking about, you know, water movement, you build more infrastructure, you got water going to a place that used to go there, now doesn't go there, so where does it go? Flood somebody's basement or some, well, not basement, their house or their property. You know.
Where were you when I needed you when we were discussing the concept plan? I've seen some of my entire life years.
I said, I was out to lunch somewhere.
You know, they go through a pretty rigorous public review process.
Roads are easy?
These concept plans go through a very rigorous public review process. They have to be found to be compliant with Metro Title XI, which includes a lot of findings for whether you have overlay districts and implementation code to actually do what you think can be done out here.
I, I get all that. It just, it makes me scratch my head.
Well, I, I think, I'll just chime in for a second, that the thing that makes me scratch my head is the the presuppositions that Metro imposes on a given area that you have to include all these parts and pieces and elements when sometimes that area is not appropriate for all those things. And my observation when I first saw the Park Place plan, which was about three years before my time, was that there was a kind of a shoehorn job to fit a lot of elements into that area that really just didn't work there. And having two town centers in that small of a area with as many physical constraints as there are just doesn't really make sense to me, but, you know.
I've lived through this.
It's easy to run a decade and say those things.
That's why I started out apologizing. I said, I apologize, I mean,
Over a decade, I've said it.
You know I'm on a Holly Lane thing. I got, I have a problem with Holly Lane.
I was a one voice in the wilderness.
I mean, I know we did a great job, we had great public outreach.
Do you want me to skip through Park Place and get on to something else you do want to hear about?
Yeah, let's.
Okay.
What was that response about?
We won't, we won't solve these.
No, we're not trying to solve any problems, I just-
But it's good to bring them up.
I read it and I went, whoa.
We're venting.
Well, the big thing is it was the first concept plan practically in the state, so there was a lot of learning that went on.
Are you moving on to another one right now?
Can you go back to this one?
Say whatever, say whatever. Again, I apologize, audience, I apologize.
If you can go back to the code.
The, one with the green, just the dark green.
Transportation network.
No, I'm not the transportation, just the general map of Park Place and where the roads- No, I'm not the transportation, just the general map of Park Place and where the roads.
You mean this one?
I guess I'm gonna have to go up there and show you what I'm referring to.
The concept plan itself.
No, 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 the map, the street map.
The map, you just had it there.
The transportation.
The street map.
Okay, the street map, where Holly Lane connects with.
Yeah, here it comes.
With Holcomb.
That one, that one.
That red area, which is directly behind me.
We, we could point for you if you want to go to.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was the one I was just talking about.
Yeah, that's the square right there. But, you know, I find it as a commissioner and as a citizen, I find it offensive, if not disturbing, we're just talking about scratching their head, that, that's, what's happening right now is there is an island of homes. Most of you haven't been there, four or five homes, that are being pressured to come into the city, not by the city, but by some of the developers. Somebody actually handed, somebody a five thousand dollar check.
Can I cut you off for a second? You're referring to a land use application and I don't want to.
Yeah, we can't really talk about that.
We have an application.
I'm just saying that I, I've been personally offended by it.
I want to sort of separate out any land use application.
Just talking about concept.
But I really appreciate your comments.
It's part of the concept plan to be, to be, people being pressured with money to be, sell and get out.
Just because we have a separate annexation and we haven't noticed it, and I don't want to get in trouble from this guy next to me. I would just like to separate that one out.
I don't want to get in trouble from him either.
Right, so, but I really appreciate your comments. In general, regarding the land, or the concept.
It's just gone for so long, I was even offered to have my home built and move out.
So.
Home, bought and moved out.
So for the street network, so we do have a street network here, you're right, there are a lot of challenges and it's part of, that's what cities have to juggle, right? There's no perfect place to expand land. And we know that when we expand land in places like this, there's environmental constraints. And we know that our code tells us not to build there. And so it sort of creates developments with nodes and pockets here and there. There's a transportation system and they're expensive and the utilities are expensive too. And that's probably why we haven't seen a lot of this built out, right? But when a development does want to happen, there's a lot of steps to get between here and there. Can you go to the next slide? So you create a concept plan and then you create measures, next one, to implement that plan. So like a map of the comprehensive plan designations, a zoning codes to actually implement those plans. And so we want to talk about which of these concept plans are sort of where we are on that spectrum. How far along are each of these and how does that development process work? So the Park Place Concept Plan, we've worked together as a community to come up with a plan. There may not be everybody in the room that is going to make completely happy, but as a community, we all agreed on this plan. And we know that we need a plan and the plan is good to have, right? And so with the plan, the next step is to have an annexation. So we would have, we have criteria for which we decide if an annexation is okay or not. And an applicant applies for annexation, the city can force annexations, but we generally don't. So at some point, you'll see property owners initiate that themselves. Some go to a vote, some don't based off our recent legislative actions. And then coupled with that or not, at some point, we'll have to do an analysis in relationship to our applicable code for zone changes and if it meets all of our requirements and our transportation impacts and that sort of thing. And then we'll have another process for development. And we have that list of criteria like frontages and roadways. So we've implemented this plan, we've implemented the code. And when development comes in, we already have clear and objective standards for how to implement this plan. This plan may also include some aspirational statements that aren't actual requirements. So those might not happen, but we know what the roadways are generally going to look like. And we know where major roadways are going to be located generally in those types of things. So it is a little more clear and objective since all of that legwork has already been done for this plan. We'll get to other plans where that's not the case, we're not that far along. So when development comes in, you'll see a staff report with a bunch of findings and you'll see findings for a zone change, it might reference back to the concept plan to say, yep, the maps match generally. You know, it's designated this comp plan designation and that is assigned this zoning designation and whatnot. But it is going to be more expensive for development to build in there. And that's probably why you, nothing's happened yet, you know, it's been adopted for quite some time. Aside from annexations as well. But if they don't have the roadway in, they can't build a development. We're not going to allow a subdivision without that transportation plan that says that those roadways are safe. And there's a timing piece for which piece goes when and where. And as a jurisdiction, we have no control over that, which is a little frustrating. It would be nice if we could sort of pick and choose the order in which things happen, but we can't. But we do know that they have to meet all the criteria such as transportation impacts in order to be approved. So that, there is some comfort in that, right? Because we have those clear and objective standards.
It hasn't been developed because of the voters have voted it down three times.
Yeah, in this case, yeah, that's probably true for this.
And now the governor's taking that right away from the citizens to vote.
So does this concept plan have a similar transportation caveat like the one we put on the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan? Because it goes down to two thirteen.
Since all of these plans were adopted, we've updated. So yes, short answer is yes, the long answer is since all these plans were adopted so long ago, we've updated most of our facilities plans, including the transportation system plan. The transportation system plan still has problematic intersections that we didn't solve for in the long run, including Beaver Creek and two thirteen. So if this, if whatever development puts too many trips through that, then it can't happen until we come up with a solution for wherever it is in the city. But that is a good point, we have adopted a new stormwater plan with, that implements all of the aspirations for stormwater out of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan.
Clarification.
So transportation planning rule compliance in the case of all three concept plans has to be shown at the time of zoning. So when a land is, when the land is annexed in, it can't be zoned until you show compliance with the transportation planning rule. So they all have that going on.
And one more aside, if I can jump in about Beaver Creek and two thirteen, I am happy to announce that we're starting on that project for alternate mobility targets, figuring out what to do with this intersection that was too congested with our twenty thirty-five hole in the TSP. And so you'll see something from us in the next couple of months. There will be a community advisory team and then a technical advisory team. Then one of the planning commissioners will sit probably on that community advisory team. So stay tuned, we're, we're actually addressing it soon.
So let me ask, let me ask the question one more time. So when we passed and approved the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, we had a finding and a statement in there that no, I can't remember exactly the wording, but it's something to the effect of that no development could occur until X, Y, and Z regarding two thirteen, the mobility standards. That was in the document. And so I'm saying, what I'm asking is obviously there was not one for the Park Place Concept Plan and obviously South End Road doesn't affect that, so.
It wasn't at that level of detail.
Detail, okay.
Certainly not at that level of detail like was in Beaver Creek Road. But, you know, Beaver Creek Road is unique because it was unremanned for a variety of reasons. So what there was in Park Place and South End was a statement. And it did get more detailed as we went toward with South End as well. But with respect to compliance with the transportation planning rule was deferred essentially.
And that's in, that's in the plan?
That's in the staff report.
I have not read the whole thing, I've skimmed it, it's quite.
Rafted documents.
It's quite laborious and I'm working my way through it, but, you know, it might be a few more months before I finally get through the whole thing. But, so that's.
And also the implementation piece of that is that we adopted in our code in twelve oh four that statement about compliance for those and that no zone changes can occur or no increase in impact on the transportation system for that intersection until we get it figured out. So it applies to all development and it's in our Oregon City Municipal Code.
And we also updated our transportation system plan, system development charges based on the adopted concept plans. So those TSP estimates are updated accordingly.
So I have a general concept plan for all concept plan question. So I'm sure you've probably read over the last few months that the, there's been some issue with the comprehensive plan process update that's been going on in Portland. And one of the issues that have come, that's come up time and time again is the fact that people who have been participating in that process, who own property, were not required at that time or didn't follow the rule about declaring that they owned property. So then when they were there testifying or lobbying or being on citizen committees, some people in the city government, the auditor basically said they had to declare that. Did we have any of those sort of issues with regard to all of our concept plans? Where there were property owners participating on the stakeholders advisory committee to declare that they had potential conflicts because they own property? And let's say, oh, I want my property to be in because of, you know, that kind of thing, so.
That did not happen, I can assure you that, I was there.
They're adopted as legislative files, so.
No, I mean, did, did people declare that they had owned property? That's my, my question is during the comprehensive, during the process of all the concept plans, we obviously had people who sat on them, who actually owned property within those boundaries, whose property would be either positively or possibly adversely affected by the decisions of the collective. And my question again, did those people declare on a record at these committee meetings that they own property and that, that sort of thing?
On Park Place.
Let me, let me quickly give you several different levels.
Okay.
First answer is, I don't know. You know, I, I didn't go back and look at the process and I, I'm looking at Pete and, you know, I know Commissioner Giles says that they, that it didn't happen. Very possibly didn't. And, and part of the reason why is the difference between a quasi judicial decision and a legislative decision. You know, when you look at bias, for example, you know, you, you look at in quasi judicial, you're supposed to be an impartial judge. When you look at legislative, you're appointed for your views and they're supposed to come out when you set those policies. And so if you're talking about, you know, biased type issues, you're expected to be biased in legislative actions. Now, there's a different conflict of interest when in fact you own property, you, you are supposed to announce that. Doesn't, doesn't prevent you from taking part necessarily. But, you know, I believe, I feel relatively confident that the planning commission, those disclosures were made and at the, the city commission, whether that was done in the technical advisory committees and some of the advisory bodies, I don't know the answer to that question. And again, Commissioner Giles seems fairly certain that it, that it hasn't. But, you know, I haven't looked at what the city of Portland had.
Well, I know that, I participated on behalf of the planning commission, in the South End one. And any, everybody on that, we knew, we all were aware of who owned property. They, they basically said that they had owned property. It wasn't an official declaration.
Right.
But I just don't want to see us have that kind of a problem that they're having in Portland with some of the large property owners basically saying, yeah, I want this. And, oh, by the way, if you do this, is, you know, it's, it's just the perception. It's not maybe the law or a requirement, but it's the perception that somebody is participating in a, in a community wide stakeholder process and that they don't, they aren't a little more upfront about saying, well, by the way, I own property here and I'm participating, you know, it's just, it's sort of just one of those disclosure things.
To a certain extent, when you have a stakeholder group, the assumption is that you've got a stake in it. It may be that your stake is environmental, it may be you own property, but, you know, you're not going to come in without some, some stake.
And everybody, and like I said, in the South End process, it was, it was, it was fairly open. And, and the way Pete managed it, we all kind of knew, because they'd say, well, I live here and, you know, but it, and, and that was, I felt that was very open. And it, it eliminated sort of a, a little bit of tension.
You knew everybody was coming from.
Yes.
And it's similar for all of them. You know, if someone was a developer interest, you might not know exactly where they own land, but you know that they had a stake in development there. And then if you had an open house or some sort of another public meeting where you had maps and somebody said, I live here and I don't want to see X here or Y here, and I do want to see it over here. You know, everyone has a stake in it that way, so.
Before we move forward, Laura, I wanted to clarify something that can impact all annexations. Did I hear you say that people, residents can be forced to be annexed in? You made a comment, when I was commenting, you said people can be forced.
If they're in an island, they can, the city can annex somebody.
They can, but the city doesn't have a practice of doing that.
Island annexations, they can be forced in. In addition, when you look at the ways in which annexations can occur, there's triple majority, double majority, where you have more than fifty percent of the property owners or more than fifty percent of the land and fifty percent of assessed value, I won't get into the specifics. But the fact that you just need a majority tells you that in fact you can be included in an annexation against your wish. And that can be voted on.
In other words, if, if somebody's lived there for twenty, thirty years and they're comfortable, if a big developer comes in with a chuckle and they can force the issue.
If you've lived there twenty, thirty years and your neighbors want to annex, they can, they can force you in depending on the numbers. And if in fact there is a, not a hundred percent, it's going to have to go to a vote. So, you know, the, the, you still have that check, the, the elimination of the vote only.
Different than the vote like we used to have on annexations.
No, so the leg, two thousand fifteen legislative change allows to avoid that vote, but only if a hundred percent of the people in the annexation want to do it. So if there's not a unanimous to come in, it's got to, you don't get to trump, you don't get to avoid the vote. So that, that is still there, that's always been the law that, you know, you can have an annexation that includes on people who don't want to come in.
But cities never had, the city has never made anyone come in that I'm aware of. The, the biggest annexation that we had since I've lived here was the state telling the city of Oregon City that we had to annex Park Place. There were a number of Park Place residents who did not want to be in the city regardless of whether their septic tanks were failing. There were some whose tanks weren't failing, they didn't want to be in. But the state of Oregon came in and said, boom, you will annex this, and the city really had no choice whatsoever.
There was an island annexation measure, you know, I want to say in the early two thousands, may have been, might have been the late nineties, where there were a number of people brought in who didn't want to be brought in. There have also been occasional smaller annexations where you've had a majority, but not the entire group who want, who, you know, where you'd had a smaller group who didn't necessarily want to come in. So it, it has happened.
But not, but usually when the push came to the shove, it wasn't, you know, the city didn't go knock on the door and say, oh, now you're going to be in. They, they, I mean, it's one of the things I've, I've certainly appreciated about the city is that it has not been rigorous in really going after that type of thing. Because it's, it's giving people options or free choice or, you know, whatever it is. And that, that's just a lot better.
The city has been very cognizant and receptive to, you know, trying to honor what people want to do.
And that's been, that's been great and I'm glad we're saying that on the record. Because, you know, you hear all sorts of, oh, the city made me do this, and I'm like, no, they didn't.
Where I was going with that bill, so if you have a big huge area and you have a strip of homes, let's say five or six, can that big area kind of force those four or five, six homes to be annexed in if it's making an island out of them?
So you're asking sort of two different questions, I'm hearing two different questions. One is if you've got a strip of homes, you know, let's say.
Existing homes.
Existing homes, you know, it's not too often that you exist, get existing homes that want to annex in unless there's development potential there. So, you know, let's sort of set aside that question for a little bit. Could they force their neighbors in even without creating an island? And the answer is yes, if they meet the double majority or triple majority in, or as chapter two two two. Under state law, they could. There is an additional valuation under Oregon City Code Title fourteen that requires a balancing of factors that the, the planning commissioner or the city commission could decide that, no, we don't quite get that, that balance for any number of reasons. So could they do it? Yes. Would it pass muster at the city? That's, that's where we look to you and to the city commission to make that final call.
Maybe these people should accept those checks they've been offered.
Well, but what I'd say is look at the screen, you can see four islands just on that map right there.
Are you, what, what screen are you looking at? I'm looking at South End right now.
We're on the.
Right there.
Are you on, are you on the presentation page?
There's islands everywhere. So it doesn't, you know, just because, you know, just because we can force an island annexation doesn't mean that it will happen. When I was on the city council and not South End, well, yeah, I guess it is, South End. You can see the islands right there. We voted to leave them out and everything else came in. So it's completely up to, to a large.
There is a comprehensive plan policy that discourages islands.
Oh, yeah, I mean, there.
But we're not forcing people, which is, like you said, the city has, is trying to be reasonable, weighing all these factors and trying to accommodate people. And that doesn't mean they may never come in, it just means that they're not in now.
But if they connect a city sewer, they should annex so that.
Yeah, and, and they're having, I remember these two times where we sewer somebody because of sewer.
Yeah, so that the cost of extending the sewer. Yeah, so that the cost of extending the sewer.
I agree with you, some people are being pressured.
That's what you're talking about and it's not relevant.
Yep, yep, all right.
All right, you ready for South End?
Yeah.
No.
A little more recent and many of you were here, so, uh, when this was going through the process. So approximately four hundred and fifty acres, two UGB expansion areas, pre-two thousand two was two hundred and forty-five acres. And then the two thousand two expansion brought in another hundred and sixty acres. The dwelling unit estimate for the buildout of this area is approximately twenty-two hundred dwelling units. Um, Metro's requirements for these areas are significantly higher density, but we went through the process of proving that we could substantially comply with Metro Title eleven with this one. So even though two thousand two hundred dwelling units seems quite a lot, it's a lot less than Metro originally required for this UGB area due to the nature of the expansion.
Just real quick.
Yeah.
You should note that some of the area was already inside the city.
Yeah, that's true.
That's why you can't add up the UGBs and get the same total.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, there's a little discrepancy.
Yeah, and the decision to bring in parts of the areas that were within the city, within the concept plan area is strictly a decision to do better planning. And yeah, it does affect the comprehensive plan for those existing areas and they could potentially be upzoned at the owner's request, you know? Um, but the concept plan itself does not zone property, I want to make that very clear. It provides a comprehensive plan designation, but it doesn't zone property. And in this area, we have two commercial retail nodes, they're, uh, shown along South End Road. Here's a clearer diagram of what that looks like without the aerial photography. Um, here you'll see the various land use densities. Um, we've got quarter mile walking radius, blue circles shown there. So they're really trying to create these small scale, commercial mixed use nodes along South End Road in areas that makes sense. Um, South End Road itself would be ultimately improved to a minor arterial road section and that was part of our transportation system plan update that came later as well. Um, and there's a significant amount of, uh, area here which is dedicated to either power line easements, open spaces or, or parks. Um, the long range plan to serve this area of transportation, I'll go through, sorry. Um, these are the values that came out of the public process. Um, these are what people really valued about Park Place, or sorry, South End. Rural character, livability, having a sense of place, environmental quality and excellent schools. And we built on those values as we went through the pro-, planning process. There were key elements in the plan, um, that have to comply with Metro Title eleven, but they're a natural part of the plan itself and they are listed here. Natural features, parks, open space and trails, housing, retail, transportation, improvements and infrastructure. Um, as I mentioned, the housing portion of this is you're really trying to attack housing from a choice perspective. So having a variety of different housing densities in this area, low density, medium density and high density towards the centers is a big part of how you get to the Title eleven requirements. Um, the density in this plan transitions towards the edges, that was a very important people. Um, you've got a big, significant, uh, open space to the north, which is the Kanema Bluff Open Space Area and, um, Metro actually owns property up off of Forest Ridge Lane there. Uh, thanks.
Sure.
I'll move through these. And so there's a parks and open space plan associated with each one of these concept plans. This is the one for South End. Some of these open spaces are going to be within areas that can't be developed, such as the power line corridors and BP, uh, Bonneville Power Administration, PGE, but they're also in areas where you can potentially combine your stormwater detention and regional stormwater. The street system, which is in our transportation system plan now, is shown here. Um, they're really trying to create connectivity so that people have choices. Um, the street types that are in our cons-, our transportation system plan here are shown as a variety of residential's, locals, mixed use, and then what they call family friendly street connectors and shared use roads. Uh, a big part of the concept for the South End plan was to have a low speed s- street around the edge of the property to the west so that homes would front onto the open space rather than onto a street and then another tier of houses. And that's something that's going to be critical to pay attention to in the future as development comes in because they wanted to be sure that there was openness towards open spaces and that sort of thing.
Like overlook in Portland.
Yeah.
Even though it overlooks industrial area, but still.
Yeah, the kinds of areas they were talking about are like, um, uh, in Selwood where you're overlooking the Oaks.
Oaks Park, Oaks Bottom, yeah, Oaks Bottom.
That's the concept that came out of the plan. Um, getting an east-west collector, an additional east-west collector from, from South End over to Central Point Road is a challenge because that area is outside the city limit and outside the urban growth boundary in some areas. So they showed a conceptual collector there. Um, the idea is that eventually you would have another east-west collector that serves this residential buildout.
This one does not show any roads going over the cliff, which is, we had a lot of testimony about that.
That's right.
But you tell, that's only like three inches to get from the end of Butte to the.
To ninety-niney?
About three inches.
And a big part of the transportation is having a walking and biking component, um, with trail connections and sidewalk connections throughout the area. Uh, here you're seeing the family friendly street route, which is in our transportation system plan, uh, which is the dotted blue and green line through that area. And that is, that's.
Where it says future street with sidewalks and bike lanes, that one?
Hmm.
You said blue dotted?
Yeah, the, this thing.
Okay.
Can you point to that?
All right.
Yeah, and then follow it into the concept plan area and bring it around. So that hasn't been built obviously yet, but it would hopefully be built as development continues.
Pete, you know, well, somebody asked me a few weeks back about, was there a way that some of those green spaces in the South End concept plan could be connected up to each other? Because there's some that are connected, but then there's others, if you, when you showed that map, they're sort of isolated. And so does that have a lot to do with the fact that some of that area and, or has, it's, it's still rural residential, but there's, um, if there had been some sort of corridor, it's been impeded or buried or, you know, it's not flowing the way it once did, I guess, years and years ago? Something like that? This is the question I got and I said, I don't know.
It's difficult once the land is in private, private hands.
Hands, yeah.
Certainly, you know, the city could adopt a provision to purchase or acquire trail corridors and, and things throughout this area and it, we did not in, adopt a, a dedication requirement for trails um, as a implementation item for this concept plan, but it is something to consider in the future. That would be a completely separate legislative process, um, since it would have, and it would have a fiscal component associated with it. So, um, but it is something that we're aware of. And the actual adopted land use plan for the area looks like this. So the light yellow is the low density residential. Then you have medium density residential, high density residential, which allows for apartments and higher density adjacent to two mixed use corridors. Um, so this is not zoning, these are comp plan designations. And then McLaughlin Elementary School is shown there, it's quasi-public as well as the metro property out there on the edge of the, uh, road, Forest Ridge. Sorry. Um, so when will this be built? We don't know. Um, there are several processes that need to occur still, annexation, potentially a vote for each one, zone change, and then you get into land development and permitting and that sort of.
So both the Park Place and the South End, we have adopted the comprehensive plan maps and the implementation by amending our zoning code. Which is different than our Beaver Creek Road concept plan. Um, so Beaver Creek Road concept plan is located south on Beaver Creek Road. It's a fair amount of acres, it's a little over four hundred and fifty acres and you can see a few UGB expansions going into that. Uh, we did adopt, well, we are going through the approval process to adopt a plan. Um, the plan that we have in place has for over five thousand jobs for this location. So this, you're going to see a shift slightly to more, um, uh, industrial employment jobs, um, rather than the focus on residential and the other two concept plans. So it was brought into the UGB, um, in some cases for different purposes than the prior ones. So for the tech flex campus industrial, there's a hundred and twenty-seven ne-, net acres and the vertical mixed use village, main street, there's twenty-nine acres. And then also there's an estimate of a little over a thousand dwelling units there. This concept plan was initiated in two thousand and six, at the same year that we started the Park Place concept plan and we are s-, it's still in the process of adopting it. Um, we are currently in land use board of appeals for this application and we have a court date scheduled for October eighth. Um, so we went through a process and we had to remand and it, um, was sort of on hold until Metro could amend their map. And, um, then we re-adopted the plan and are in Luba, land use board of appeals associated with that as well. So you can see the general layout is the employment area up north, the mixed use village and a main street. Um, you can see the proximity of the mixed use employment village to the high school and the proximity of main street to Glen Oak Road. And then there's some neighborhood components and then you'll see some environmentally sensitive areas sort of off the edge there. Um, there was a variety of goals that were established with the, this concept plan as well. So one thing that we want to communicate is that there was a lot of public involvement and, in each of these three concept plans and that there was separate goals and visions for each of these. Um, so we worked with the community to try and figure out again how we want to develop, um, in our community, given our constraints. So the vision for the Beaver Creek Road concept plan was a complete and sustainable community and you saw a lot of goals and implementations associated with that. The key features associated with this were is a complete mix of land uses and then policies that support, um, some synergy between employment and the college, um, location right there as well. A lot of sustainable strategies that, um, were aspirational in the plan. And a trail network that went through all of the subject districts and connected to our larger regional trail system as well. We, we talked about the land uses a little bit. Um, so the employment one, again, is that tech flex and campus, it's blue on the map. Um, the mixed use village, which is purple on the map, um, is transit oriented density, so it's mixed use. So you're looking at that three to five, um, story building scale. There's the main street node right there at the end of Glen Oak and that would have some sort of shops and services and amenities located there. And then you have a couple of neighborhoods. The Wex-, West Mixed Use Neighborhood is a medium high density residential. So, uh, that is our two, is our high density residential zoning designation. So it's a, um, essentially two thousand square foot per unit, um, density and then also some mixed uses. The East Mixed Use Neighborhood has a little bit lower density residential, which is our five, which is our medium density residential comprehensive plan designation and appropriate mixed uses. The one thing that's different on this one though is we didn't adopt a concept plan and we didn't do any implementation zoning yet. So what exactly these mean is still, um. We adopted the cons-, did I say that backwards? We adopted the comprehensive, concept plan, but no comprehensive plan. So exactly where the locations are and exactly what, um, North Employment Campus means has yet to be refined.
So th-, this is, uh, under review by Luba?
It is.
The concept plan.
The concept plan is, uh, before Luba for the second time. Um, after we, um, had the remand for the first, we amended, Metro amended their map, um, associated with urban, uh, the urban growth boundary and urban rural reserves. And then we went back for a local adoption and that local adoption also got appealed to Luba. And so we're before Luba now, the record has been settled and we have a court date scheduled for October sixth.
Does Metro get involved in this, uh, at all? It's just the local challenge?
Just local.
Okay.
Yeah.
Unless Metro were to be upset with the way the locals implemented it. The local jurisdiction is doing it right, they, they, they.
So we've been working on this one ten years, I hope to have a final, uh, adoption at some point. And then at some point we'll have to start to work on implementation pieces as well. Open space was a large component of this concept plan. You'll see these large rubens of open spaces going through the concept plan. As in all of the concept plans, there are some stream and slope challenges.
We talked about that.
Circulation, um, we talk about transportation networks in all of our concept plans and that's a good reason why we have concept plans is to figure out how we're going to connect into our transportation system and serve all of these, uh, communities. So there was some nice synergy with, well, Park Place concept plan happening at the same time as the Beaver Creek Road concept plan happening originally back in two thousand and six. So we can kind of look at that north-south connection in a more comprehensive way. You'll see it connect into, um, our existing city in many different points of interest and interactions. There's a focus on mul-, multi-modal, um, transportation as well. Uh, here's the North Employment Campus. Again, we're really high level, just looking at what that looks like. So some of that tech flex campus is one to two stories maybe. Um, your resource areas, that, there's power lines over in this section of city as well, which mean, um, a lot less development below it and some constraints there. There's this central grove, which is important and open space, part of the component of the property. Then there's it, this central mixed employment village and you'll see those three to five story buildings and some sort of various uses all around that node. Our main street, um, some, some pictures to give us visions of what we were thinking when we created the plan. Three to five story buildings with some focal point for the whole concept plan. A place to provide services. With all the concept plans, we're sort of looking at, um, where we're expanding, providing amenities which are accessible to people. And then here's the neighborhood component as well. You'll have that west mixed use and then, um, the, the east neighborhood as well.
Laura.
Mm-hmm.
For purposes of fiscal projection, uh, do you, uh, mix the, uh, the infrastructure, water and sewer? Uh, give that the emphasis that you do on transportation? Cause I notice transportation is about the only real technical thing that, that, uh, is included in these, uh, concept plans.
That's a great question and when we, when I was putting this together, um, I included transportation because we seem to get a lot of questions about transportation. We do go to the same level of specificity for utilities as well. But since, um, we're not engineers, I sort of skimmed over that one. Um, but there are, in each of the concept plans, there are studies and reports that identify that it is feasible for all of these areas to be served. And it goes into some detail, but it's still a high level of how that ought to happen. And then since all of the plans have been adopted, we have updated all of, most of our utility plans. We had, we updated the TSP, we updated the storm water master plan, we updated the water.
Sewer master plan and the water master plan.
And the water master plan. So those plans have all been updated, assuming these concept plans are being constructed. So when we do the concept plan, we just do a general analysis to make sure that they can be served. Then when we refine the master plan. Then when we refine the master plans, we narrow that scope a little bit. Um, to show how they can generally be served, and then when development comes in, we'll look at it um, at, with a fine-tooth comb as well. So we're sort of at each stage of the development, looking at all of our utilities and infrastructure items such as transportation. But since we get the most questions about transportation, I just decided to focus on that since I didn't wanna talk all night long. But it's a great question. So the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, again, as we restated earlier, it's not adopted, uh, it's not effective yet, we're still in Luba with it, is there um, a legal way to say that? And it's locally adopted?
No, it ac- it actually is adopted, uh, I'm trying to remember if it is acknowledged only after the uh, uh,
DLCD?
After Luba has done it, I can't recall where it is, but it is adopted, it's being challenged in, in the courts. And certainly to the extent we do too much action on it, i- it gets complicated to unwind if something happens on it, so. And we're, we're moving with all deliberate speed, given that we had a, you know, six to eight y- six-year delay with the Metro map.
Well, you know, good things come to those who wait, and if we have to wait, it's much better to wait, cause like you said, we don't wanna unwind, so. Laura, could I back you up just two seconds, so make sure I heard correctly? You were saying generally that utilities are able to serve the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan area? Or were you talking about all the concept plan areas?
All of them, so one of the purposes for concept planning is to show that the areas can be served by, both by the transportation network, but also by our utility network as well. So we'll do a high-level analysis, and then when we do our master plans, we do a more detailed analysis. And then when development occurs, we can't, kinda continue to do that more detailed analysis.
Okay, well, isn't the general analysis just that, it's very general, so it seems to me that there's some maybes written in that.
The one thing that's tricky, right, is when development comes in, you don't know who's going when first. So you don't know which part of the infrastructure is already in the ground yet, but you do know that you need, that property needs to have utilities in order for us to approve it.
Well.
So, I could elaborate.
You know, I don't think we gotta be kidding ourselves about land use planning. There's a lot of maybes in the whole process. Really, this whole thing is a maybe.
Well, I, that's.
I, I can't predict what's happening two weeks or two years down the road, this whole thing has to be flexible.
Well, I, that's what I was, that's.
Yeah, and I agree with you.
Yeah, no, I'm, I agree with you.
Well, by golly.
And it's not, it's not a Damon maybe, it's just another maybe. But.
Is that a first?
I, I think we hit a milestone.
No, no, it is not, we, we.
We should close the record right now.
We, we agree on, we agree on a lot of things, ladies and gentlemen, but.
Oh, yeah.
Wanna bet?
Just, just to kind of, you know, I guess, go over what you said about the concept plan, I mean that with utilities, the concept plan says, yes, we can do it with current technology, we need, we need pump stations. For, and, and then when you get to the master plan, then the engineers really get into it and they say, yeah, with this area, we need three pump stations. And then when the developer comes in, that's when you say, and we need to put one of them here. And that's, that's basically the way it pyramids out.
Or the engineers say, maybe we can't serve that.
Well, but that's.
That, that's, that's the ma- that's the maybe, Bob.
Yeah.
That's, that's the real issue, that's the real issue, that's where the city gets caught off base.
Yes.
And it en- ends up costing the public, and that's the surprise right there.
The topic known as concurrency.
So when you. Concurrent, yes, so when you say that we don't know where it's going to occur, I mean, the way that planning works is that we don't start with, with the piece of property at the very end. We're, you know, in, in the best of all possible worlds, we grow incrementally. We don't start down here and leapfrog over here and then try to get some sort of sewer put in, or some mut- anything, any facilities put in. That's not, that doesn't seem like smart planning to me, if we start at the end and we don't incrementally go here, 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 so. I, I think, I think that the city does have some idea generally. I'm, I'm giving the city a lot of credit for that, because I think they do, in general, the city, I'm thinking of.
Giving yourself credit for it, as a planning commission.
The, you know, the anonymous city we. So I think there is a plan, I think there is a plan, I think the city does have an idea of, you know, Joe Schmo comes in at the end and you go, gee, I just don't think that we're gonna be able to serve you, you're at the end, you need to incrementally get it there.
Or, or, yes, we're willing to serve you, if you're willing to pony up the seven million dollars to drive that sewer line.
Well, there you go.
Two miles down the road.
And I've seen it happen.
Yeah.
I've seen it happen.
Yeah, that's very costly.
That's a great segue to our last slide.
Alright.
Um, talks about how decisions are made, and um, they aren't in a conference room in the back. Um, they're all in public process. So we have criteria in which we utilize to make decisions, such as the orderly um, installation of utilities and things like that. Or the existence or reliance on our utility system. And we hold that very sacred. And it means a lot to us as, in, in the planning division and um, in community development, that we have findings that show compliance. And that anyone could read our staff reports, and um, it's good reading, so I recommend it. But.
Did you hear that, audience? It is good reading.
Good reading, so.
Just before you go to bed.
If you wanna read that hundred-page staff report with all of those findings on those criteria, that it's there, and it means something. And we have lawyers who um, pay close attention to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and when it's in our code, that's what our code says. And that implements our comprehensive plan and all these other regional plans that we have. And that just to know that ethically and legally, that's wh- how we implement um, the code and make sure that development is okay or not. It's not sort of a popularity contest or anything like that, uh, we have criteria and we hold that very sacred. And we wanna make sure that we get it right. And we appreciate anyone giving us our comments, because we generally wanna do really good for this community, right? That's uh, that's why we all got into this field, is that we want to have a great community. And we want everyone to be a part of it, so we appreciate public comment, we wish there was more. Um, and that we are here to assist the community in any way that they have. If they wanna know questions about concept plans, or give suggestions for us to give presentations to planning commission, that's what we're here for. Um, but when development occurs, we have various avenues to keep the public engaged, to make sure that they have say in that, in the locations where we have discretion, and we also try very hard to make sure that our code is clear and objective. So it's easy for us to implement, and it's easy for the city and the public to understand.
Absolutely. Oregon City has a diversity of interests and uses and ways by which we enjoy our properties. And I am thankful that we have the rule of law by which we are protected, and by which our diverse interests are also protected.
Amen.
I would also just like to add that there, there's a lot of the process that uh, is handed to us from other authorities. And uh, some of that comes from Metro, and comes some from the state, and some from even the federal government. And uh, so, some of the things that we do, like when we point to the procedures on the wall, those are things that we're doing because we're following procedures that have been established by the state legislature, or Metro, or.
Correct.
Other, other organizations. So s- some things that if you don't like the way we're doing it, you need to go over our heads, so to speak.
Our hands are tied.
Go to the legislature and say, we don't like the way
Right.
they're doing it, because you've got a regulation in place that's, it's either impeding things from happening, or it's being uh, interfering with things from happening.
You know, a guy by the name of Fasano did that.
You probably knew Mr. Fasano. You probably, probably met Mr. Fasano.
No, he read one, read one of my staff reports and he said, ah.
But I mean, part, part of it is too, is that, you know, what Laura's basically saying is that basically the comprehensive plan is, is, and I'm using the word metaphorically, is our bible. And that document is the guiding document, so if it's in the comprehensive plan and we've adopted it by ordinance, and we've got all of our appendices and our other master plans and stuff, that's what, that's what people have the ability to rely on. Not necessarily the concept plans, because they're concept, but the comprehensive plan itself is the, is the guiding document. Then we have our implementing ordinances, and so the public, at least in that part, has some assurance that what that document says is that's what we're doing. At least that's, that's how I read it. People get, people get, people get very confused with that, and I get confused by it, but.
Are you done with your presentation, Laura?
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I apologize if my earlier comments were inappropriately timed. But I know as a commission, we spend a lot of time discussing trees, when they're gonna reme- be removed, this and that. But when I hear that some people are preempting, or even our process, by trying to um, offer people money to move out, or to keep quiet and not, and somebody who said, here's a check of five thousand, if you'll keep your comments and not challenge uh, the annexation here, when you, when I hear those kind of things, to me, that's not ethical. And I thought, I should bring it before the city, because somebody should tell somebody, you're not supposed to be doing that kind of stuff before. I don't know if that's legal or not, but if they can, um, I don't think it's appropriate, but it's before it even gets to us, people are doing that. And that's what I wanted to bring out tonight. Okay, so is there any more to your presentation, or?
Nope, but I do have a couple updates for you.
Okay, that's very good.
Um, we hired a new community services director, his name is Phil Lewis, and his first day was today.
That's what I understand.
Feel free to stop by and uh, say hello. We also hired a new planner to replace my old position, and his name is Trevor Martin, and he starts on Halloween. Um, he's coming to us from Yakima, and he will be our preservation planner as well. Uh, so he will take over uh, the review for all historic applications, and he will oversee that program. In addition to other current planning and long-range planning as needed. The next thing is that I'm gonna s- I will be sending out an email to likely all of our committees, um, including the planning commissioner, planning commission regarding the comment period for a grant. We applied for a grant for Malala Avenue. This may sound familiar, because we've applied for it before and didn't get it. Um, there's a comment period in which um, everyone from Oregon City is encouraged to chime in to support our grant. Or, it's a little unclear on how much that support is weighed, but um, as much as support that we could get for improvements along Malala Avenue, the better, so it's the, the upper part, um, the flat part of Malala Avenue.
What, what do you consider the upper part?
It's, well, the flat part, I guess.
Fred Meyer.
From Fred Meyer South, or in that area?
Yes, yes, in that area, that's correct, sorry.
Okay. And what do we wanna do, what do we want to do there?
We want to do some street improvements, so what, if you were to look further down Malala Avenue and Seventh, it would be that sort of treatment up n- um, south. And it's not enough money to do a full improvement, so there's some places where you wouldn't see any changes, but you would start to see landscaping and um, planner strips and things like that. Sidewalks, yes, on the Walla Avenue, what a great spot for sidewalks. And the comment period for that is October seventh through November seventh, so we have a while before we start our comments. But um, we'll be forwarding around that, and if you could spread it out across your networks, that would be great.
Can we take a comment from the audience?
I apologize, I meant to give you Bob's card.
Who's Bob?
Bob right here.
Oh, this, this guy, Bob? Boy, we're really having a problem with our names today, aren't we?
I know this in the public comment, but the Malala, the Malala piece came up, and we actually made the application. Uh, a couple years ago, it got, I think the basically reason it got denied was because Oregon City was very successful in getting those uh, tho- tha- that support in previous ones, and so. But the Malala, that Malala corridor is one of our worst safety corridors, in fact, I think it is the worst safety corridor in Oregon City. Uh, most of our fatal accidents occur on that stretch. And uh, so I, my understanding is that based on what we put forward before, pedestrian improvements would be a major component of that, I just wanted to, I wanted to let you know.
Yeah, I was at the county meeting where they basically said, Oregon City, you've had enough, no more. It's like, but it's the best plan, too bad we're going to do stuff on it.
We had got the jug handle, which was very expensive, right?
Well, I, I will tell you that, you know, Malala Avenue has been substantially improved, but I, the part that is, that I see driver frustration is the fact that you end up with these long strings of cars, where people who are trying to turn onto it or get off of it, they have no opportunity to get in. I drove out to Coffield Road at one-thirty this afternoon. I don't know what number I was, but I could see the cars way ahead of me going down two thirteen, or Malala Avenue as it goes into two thirteen, and I could not see the end of it. It, it, it's like we get these necklace chains of cars. And it's just one car after the other, and then when the bus stops on Malala Avenue, it backs all the way up down the hill, down Seventh.
Welcome to my neighborhood.
And I've, you know, had people say, why did they take out the other lane, you know, and I just, I have to kinda go, okay, la-la-la-la-la-la, not hearing this.
If they raise the speed limit up to fifty, it would solve the problem.
No.
So I, I, I have another comment card from Bob LaSalle, if you'd like to step up front.
That's great communications.
Are we talking about concept plans, or what are we talking about?
We are.
Thank you for the time, commissioners. I'm going to speak about the Park Place Concept Plan tonight. And some people have been asking me, well, why are you addressing the concept plan when there's not even any development yet? Well, there is. Uh, we've already, as the Park Place Neighborhood Association, received annexation plans from the builders. At least a builder, and a very large area. In fact, I have some maps that I'll pass out to you here. There's one for the record too there, Pete. I'm the chair of the Park Place Neighborhood Association, I'm also the chair of the Transportation Advisory Committee. And I got involved in looking at this Park Place Concept Plan from the transportation si- standpoint. The more I got into that, the more I got into the rest of it, and I thought, this is a really important thing to address. I wonder how much the planning commission and the city commission really know about the details of these concept plans. And um, as you know, the mission of the neighborhood associations is land use. That's the primary issue that the neighborhood associations are supposed to address. Well, most of our Park Place Neighborhood Association Steering Committee is here in attendance tonight, because this is our monthly steering committee meeting, your meeting tonight. Because of the Park Place Concept Plan issue. There are some people, well, several people, still in town that were involved in planning this, and one of them just happened to be speaking, some guy named Doug Neely. He was involved in the original planning of this, so, some of you may know him from some other time.
Never heard of him.
Um, but you people
He's new to town.
Right here, have a golden opportunity to make a huge difference in the city. You right here, just as much as the Willamette Falls issue. Because when you start looking at concept plans, you're talking about the whole city, not just one area, but the whole city. And it'll be up to you to make sure that the city can support those concept plans. And there's some real questions about that, and we'll get into that a little bit, but uh, the key elements, you already saw a quick slide or presentation on that, um, of the Park Place Concept Plan are two primary north-south connections between Holcomb Boulevard and Redland Road. And you can see on the map that I provided you, that uh, they're shown there on your map. See, I gave. Could I one of those back?
You have an extra one.
You had an, yeah, you did have an extra one.
I'm trying to pull up.
My notes on one of them that I gave away.
Well, this one has writing on it, is that?
Yeah, they all do.
Yeah, this, that's the one, yeah, okay. But you'll see, uh, one example is the Holly Lane North Extension from Redland Road, which is the, the uh, left to right red line there, right through the middle. Eighteen million, six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Now, that's in two thousand sixteen dollars, that's not in when, when the Park Place Concept was arrived at, it's today's prices. Now, that's in 2016 dollars. That's not in when, when the Park Place Concept was arrived at. It's today's prices. That's a lot of money. Where are we gonna get that money? The Swan Extension to Livesay, Livesay to Redland, four million, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And that includes, in that one, there's at least two bridges that would have to be built. On the Holly Lane Extension, at least one bridge would have to be built. So where are we gonna get the money for that? Those things have to be, started to be thought about now. Same thing goes with any of the other infrastructure. For example, the sewer line down at Redland Road would have to be increased to thirty-six inch line. I don't know what's there now, but in order to accommodate the sewage coming out of the North Village, it would, you know, it goes, flows downhill, goes down to Redland Road. A thirty-six inch pipe, now that's a big, big pipe. I mean, I used to be a pipe fitter, so I know. Two distinct mixed-use neighborhood, neighborhoods, North Village and the South Village. Well, why am I talking only about the North Village? Because that's what's happening right now. You're gonna be getting presentations in the near future from the developers on the North Village. If you look at that map, up at the north side, you'll see an area that's surrounded in red. Can everybody see that area?
Right by Livesay, or?
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah, between, between Livesay and Holcomb Boulevard. That's the area that's being proposed to be developed, to be annexed. So that's quite a large area. Within the North Village and the South Village, there are proposed 1,458 dwelling units. Nine hundred and thirty-six of those will be in the North Village. One of the other key elements is the neighborhood-oriented commercial nodes to integrate commercial land uses, residential land uses, and public open space. They also show an area for a new civic institution like a library or community center. Well, remember, this was in 2008 when they put that together. So a new library is already in the works, just not in Park Place. But a community center would be a nice thing to be included. Parks. Now, Park Place has a park. If you want to call a dried-up grass field a park. It's pretty sad. But those are included, a couple of parks are included in the Park Place Concept Plan, one of which, the largest one, is in the North Village. A mix of housing types and ranges of affordability. Now, that's covered in the Oregon City Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen, point twenty-one, which is a single-family residential standards for Park Place Concept Plan area. So there are some differences in housing types that are projected to be in Park Place. For example, garages have to be side or rear entry. That's kind of a different kind of swamp concept, but that's in the code. So you'll have to be sure that, obviously, the developers have that in mind. A mix of housing types and ranges of affordability, an extensive system of off-street and on-street trails and pedestrian bicycle connections. Well, you can see by the very topography of the Park Place area, that North Village area is ideally suited for trails and bike trails and that sort of thing. Beautiful area to develop that in. Innovative green onsite stormwater treatment methods. Now, if you'll go and look in the Park Place Concept Plan, which is available online, they, those innovative green onsite stormwater treatment methods are truly innovative. Be the first time that I think we'll have seen any of those in Oregon City. And again, due to the topography of the area, it's very, very possible that you don't have to build any of these great big stormwater collection areas. It can all be done naturally and beautifully, beyond that. Protected sensitive areas, included ranges and steep slopes. Again, the codes prohibit building on those steep slopes, and so the builders will have to be held to accountable for that. Streets and buildings oriented for solar access. That would be nice. Whether it's practical is another matter. Use of green edges to define neighborhoods and buffer developments. Again, a perfect opportunity throughout this whole area. The core values that they talked about, you know, the, the Willamette Falls project has core values. Well, there are also core values here in the Park Place Concept Plan, and those are environment, community design, and transportation and traffic. So everything is, is worked around those core values. Very, very important. Within the Park Place Concept Plan, there's twelve areas that are addressed in detail, and I just list them here. Explain them to you. Alphabetic, I mean, alphabetically, not necessarily how they are in the concept plan, or their order of importance. But number one is commercial, number two, green edges, number three, housing types. Again, that goes back to Chapter seventeen, point twenty-one. Natural resources, parks. Number six is schools. Now, that is gonna be a very, very crucial part of this concept plan, because I don't have my notes with me on this, but I got the information from the school district. When the concept plan was first, first put together, there were two elementary schools in Park Place. And the concept plan says that they would be able to handle the additional children. Since that time, the Park Place School has been closed. There's a private academy in there now. But Holcomb Elementary is the only public school left in the Park Place area. Right now, they are within seventy-five students of capacity. Now, you can imagine what's, the impact of an area this size being developed. And that's not even counting the developments that are going in right now in Park Place. The impact that'll have on that school, something's gonna have to be done, either a new school or addition to that school. And what I'm afraid of is they'll bring those modules in.
Or they can kick the private academy out of the other school and reopen it.
Yeah, that'd be kind of unkind. I mean, it's a good growing, it's, it's a good operation. They, they do good in the community, really. And I, we have, I know them very, very well, because they host our meetings, the Park Place meetings. And they are a real good people. So I think that would be possible, somewhat cruel. I'm not a cruel person.
Bob, we're, we're climbing up toward nine o'clock. Can I get you to kind of conclude your remarks?
I certainly will. The rest of these are sensitive areas, solar access, storm water. Transportation, crucial element there, very crucial. If we don't get those other roads put in quickly, everything's gonna go to Holcomb Boulevard, and that's gonna be a mess. Or some of it will go down to Livesay Road. If you've ever driven on Livesay Road, it's pretty sad. You won't handle any more traffic.
You don't wanna drive on Livesay, that's for sure.
So what I'm saying is that the Park Place Neighborhood Association is trying to emphasize your importance of following what is in the Park Place Concept Plan, the spirit of it. And, and if, if you can't get Park Place right done, it's questionable whether you can support the rest of them. But if you can get Park Place done right, which is coming up soon, that's why I'm sitting here. Then, with all the topography and difficult terrain and whatnot at Park Place, if you can get it done right there, you can certainly get it done in any of those other concept plan areas, because they're pretty flat. So, are there any?
Well, can I just ask, where did you get these figures for the, the road extensions?
I got those at the Transportation Advisory Committee last week, directly from John Lewis.
I think that's 2016 figures, if it was to be built today.
Which are in the one, in the eighteen million, six hundred and twenty thousand, Holly Lane North Extension, in 2008, it was about twelve million dollars. And on the other one, the Swan Extension, it was about two and a half million dollars in 2008, so.
Does this, I wonder, does anybody know, does the city pick up that cost, or do the developers pick up the cost of roads like that?
Try to get developers to pick up as much of the cost as possible. I was talking with Laura. She was very informative. In the last couple of meetings I had, where there, there are several different methods of getting those streets made. Sometimes a developer will build them all up front and then be reimbursed as development comes along. Other, other things, the city is responsible.
I know we saw Sunnyside, they built all the homes out before they widened the road, and then all of a sudden they had that big mess of traffic as they tried to widen the roads to accommodate all the homes they built. So I was just wondering about those figures. Thank you.
That was a chicken and egg thing.
Yeah.
Well, and that's always the challenge, and, and some of the funding that Bob's talking about comes from the SDCs, which is hand-in-hand with the development, so.
I think the developer told us that he would have to make the homes first to be able to do this, so that's what I'm afraid of.
And that's, that's always the challenge, is how do you get the money before the development?
But Charles, the SDCs don't come close to even covering those costs. That's, that's not what, that's not what they're for, you know?
And that's where the challenge is, is, is you, you either put it on the developer, or it has to be underwritten by the taxpayers.
Yeah, and I don't think the taxpayers wanna pay for that.
It was interesting you mentioned that, because early in our discussions, we had thought about asking for all the SDCs that were generated in Park Place to be spent in Park Place. And then I was advised that we should probably be careful what we asked for. So that went away.
You might, might find out that it's not even close.
Well, not only that, but everybody else might be selfish when we, when the other matters, so.
Chair Kidwell, sorry to interrupt. It's time to change the tape.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time. Any more questions? We, we want to be proactive here.
We have no tape, so we're not saying anything.
Well, we're pretty much done here.
It'll take about five minutes if you wanna wait, or. Chair Kidwell, we're ready again. Brenna was very fast.
I don't wanna be in the three levels of hell.
So we'll wrap this up.
Yes, go ahead.
You have one comment?
There will actually be two.
Is this a different comment?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
No, I'm just responding to the Malala question that you brought up when I came up here. Doug Neely, Oregon City. I wanted to say at the point when the annex, the expansion of the urban growth boundary occurred, that the Metro asked us to look at four different blocks of land, extending, I think, all the way to Caris Nursery on, on Redland. The commission voted for two blocks of land, and that was the Park Place and also Holly Lane. I was the only commission that voted, commission that voted against it because of Holly Lane. The point I wanted to make there, too, is Redland Road is bounded by a bluff on one side and a, and a major stream on the other, and I think the opportunity is very, very limited.
You mean slim and none?
The, the other thing I wanted to bring up, it says, Scott, I'm chair of the Natural Resource Committee. Another thing that has come up in some of our discussions is to look and take another look at our wetland inventory, or delineate wetlands. The state has identified wetlands that we do not currently have. And I think particularly as these new areas that are being brought in, are, are coming in, that there may well be areas here that we really haven't gotten into our wetland buffers that we probably ought to be looking at. And that, that requires some, requires some money in public input to do that, but maybe over the next two or four years, it's one of the things that we ought to be looking at. I just wanted to.
I would totally agree with that, wholeheartedly.
Yep.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Those are the constraints.
Gentlemen, I have a question for our esteemed staff. And I know you want to go home, but I have been hearing rumors about stuff going on with regard to accessory dwell, not accessory dwelling, but structures that are not made out of wood.
Membrane structures?
Yes, and what is going on with that? Because I get the feeling that we are being left out. And I understand that you very nicely made a suggestion that we do be involved.
Thank you. So, we, it's a long story.
Yes, I don't want, we don't need the story. I just, I wanna just get that, you don't have to answer yes or no. Nope, you know, I'm not putting you on the spot. I'm just saying, this is, this is what I understand.
There will be a work session with the city commission in next month, so October, I can't remember exactly what the date is.
And why is that?
So we can all show up as citizens.
What started was that we had a lot of complaints for code enforcement for membrane structures.
Yes, they came, remember?
Yeah, they came in June.
Yes.
As you recall, membrane structures are fabric or metal accessory structures. And in addition to our other standards for accessory structures, like setbacks and things like that, we have these regulations that talk about material. And we received a fair number of code enforcement complaints regarding membrane structures in June.
Was it mostly the metal ones, or was it the fabric ones?
It was a mix of both. The ones that are remaining are all metal.
Okay.
So since that time, some of the structures have been removed. Some, one was like a shipping container, and some were fabric, and about half maybe were metal. And so we went down from the forty-two complaints that we have, and now we have eighteen that are remaining. And we had a large group also show up to the city commission, so the people on code enforcement. So the city commission continued this conversation regarding membrane structures. At the city commission, they decided to have a work session on it and a hearing, and now they're, or maybe there's two hearings, and now we're having our first work session on membrane structures this month, so.
What was the hearing? There was, you said there was a hearing?
There was a couple of meetings where there was public testimony on membrane structures. It was an agenda item. It was not an item to change the code in any way. It was an update. Yeah, there was a lot of feedback coming to the commission regarding the excessive number of code enforcement violations. So to give you some framework or parameter for that, we've received, I can't recall exactly, but 250 code enforcement violations since it was adopted in 2011, on January first, 2011. And in June, we got forty-seven. So a large chunk in a small amount of time, and so.
Wasn't that all by one person, too?
You know, I don't know. There was a lot by one particular, but I don't wanna know. I don't know.
I don't wanna know either.
It doesn't matter to me, because I just read the code. And so we've been working with property owners to try and address those violations. There's some in which are more difficult than others, that they just don't comply. And that's sort of where we are with most of the eighteen that are remaining. The city commission wants to think about what our regulations are. And in particular, when we adopted the membrane structure, we had a delay as far as its effectiveness. So we adopted it in the summer of 2010. It wasn't effective until January first, 2011. And it was retroactive, so it said all structures that were there before had to go away. No new ones, plus please remove your existing ones, even if they were legal in the first place. plus please remove your existing ones, even if they were legal in the first place. And so the city commission wants to sort of talk about our regulations for accessory structures and those materials. We'll probably talk about the whole suite of regulations, including setbacks and height and material and location, and get some direction from them on if they want the planning division to look into it further, to see if there are any amendments that are needed.
This is kind of like your argument on food carts.
Well, we're, we're required to adhere to design requirements for these, for these businesses and the houses and all of those kind of stuff, and then someone can pop up an accessory structure and, anyway, never mind.
Well, you know, some of those developments, I think, out, not in the core, but out, have, have requirements for, they have standards, and they're HOAs. And so some of those things aren't even allowed by those requirements, and people are just kind of, well, I don't wanna say they're flaunting it, but maybe that's kind of, but anyway. So would you let us know when that is going to happen? Because the work session, because it seems to me that that is something that's, that the, the planning commission would be interested in, or at least I know I am.
I guess, I guess you have the question. If we don't have the work session, is the ordinance material gonna come back to us for our review? Or is this going to go from work session with the city commission to review and adoption by the city commission and no review by planning commission?
Good question. So the work session is just for city commission to ponder if they wanna direct staff to look into it further or amend code in any way. If we do, then you will see a application that'll go before you first, before it goes to city commission. So if there are any changes, you will definitely see it. The, the date is October eleventh.
Yeah. Because I looked at that table, and there were, there were
I'm gonna be in Ashland, so I will not be here.
almost none of them that received a building permit to, to construct those.
That's right, zero.
And they were asking for some kind of dispensation on, under the existing non-conforming or grandfathering, as you will, if you will.
Ooh, I hate that.
And I think that you have to, I know, right. But I think you have to have something permitted in the first place in order to get to the non-conforming status. So there might be a bit of a problem with that block of, of buildings that, that people are asking to be, to attain that non-conforming status.
It's not non-conforming if it didn't, wasn't permitted.
Right, just one of the eighteen that are remaining would be allowed if, if we allowed that metal material. So all of the other seventeen are, don't meet setbacks or separation or height.
It's nothing political, it's just the, the rule of law by which we live under.
Right, just for, for, for us, it's just reading the code.
I don't have a problem with structures inherently. I mean, they're kind of cool or whatever, but you gotta go about it the right way, I think.
Laura, how do those things hold up against a pretty stiff wind? Because I've seen some pretty big, flat surfaces.
Yeah.
Well, and then, you know, if you've got, you don't have any separation, and you live next door to one of those, and you have some sort of a, an emergency,
Well, yeah. Sure.
poom, there goes your property.
I was at the commission meeting. I was at the commission meeting, and I heard a lot of the remarks. I was at the commission meeting, and I heard a lot of the remarks. A lot of those were cemented in, and they were solid, and they've been through, I mean, that's what they, they were saying at the commission meeting.
Yeah.
But they don't have permits.
They don't have a permit that, that says that that was done.
So they, they can't be inspected with another permit?
Exactly.
So the other thing is, I, I just wanna say that I think that the city staff has been doing a great job on the, talking to people about compliance with the sign code. But I've noticed a whole bunch of new A-frames showing up on Malala Avenue that don't come in after the time they're supposed to be coming in.
Oh, okay.
Some people have permits, some people don't have permits, and there's banners that suddenly appear in places.
We've got our own code enforcement officer right here.
No, I mean, just saying, you know, I, I, again, I have all, I have all that time to look around while I'm waiting in that long line of traffic on Malala Avenue. I'm sitting there twiddling my thumbs because you can't, you know, you can't go anywhere.
You wanna keep Denise moving?
Charles, I got one more.
Yes.
Laura, I noticed down on Main Street, oh gosh, across from the public parking there, that boat business. Boy, are they using Main Street as a, as a means to do business, moving boats in and out of their lot and parking big boats on, on Main Street, to warehouse them, so to speak. And I'm just wondering, you know.
It's kind of dangerous.
Their, their, their land use activities sure spilling over into the street.
Private use of the public right of way.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I, it's, it's a public hazard, because some of these, I, I saw a big, a low boy that delivered a boat, tried to turn a corner, and in the process took out a stop sign. Just kept going, didn't, you know, didn't even notice it. And so, you know, it is a public hazard, really, traffic-wise, and probably in violation of the, of the city code for land use. Because, you know, they're gonna use the public right of way to do business, so I would suggest to take a look at that and see what's going on.
We have a couple of properties that are like that, where the building is literally, that's the property line, and they park their cars that they're doing repair in, in where, if there was a sidewalk, that's where it would be.
And in some regard, you know, that, that is a public hazard, because, you know, it's a sight distance clearance.
Well, you couldn't even walk there if you're trying to be on that side of the street, because they have all their.
Yeah, and I think of the kids and the moms with strollers and things like that, you know, wheelchairs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Laura, do we have any more communications?
We do not.
And you only had a date in, you had some, we have some nebulous day in November for the Willamette Falls thing. We don't know the, the specific, okay?
That's correct. It'll likely be in Oregon City. We're working on it, so then we'll know the date, and I'll, I'll keep you posted.
Is that a, a planning meeting for the, I know we talked about it when we had a joint work session with the city commission. Is this a planning meeting to plan it out? Because I know they were saying they were gonna start it this year.
It's gonna be a fun meeting, because you're gonna start to look at the design options and weigh in on design options. So in the scheme of the Riverwalk, this is for phase one, and we would like to get a bid for construction docks on January of two thousand and eighteen. So we're taking our design and are refining it, so you're gonna actually have something to comment on.
So someone's made a, kind of an early design to give us an idea of what it might look like, and then we're gonna tweak that?
Yeah, a couple, couple scenarios.
Okay.
So when is that happening?
In November.
In November.
Thanksgiving.
No, there won't be Thanksgiving.
But we do have a meeting on October twenty-fourth.
You do have October twenty-fourth. You do not have October tenth. That will be canceled, because there are no agenda items.
That is United Nations Day, as I recall.
How exciting.
The twenty-fourth of October.
Yeah, I look forward to the November meeting, so I can see how the whitewater designs are integrated into the Riverwalk.
I think that's over.
And I'll leave that.
Are we, are we concluded?
We are, thank you.
A move that we adjourn?
We're adjourned.